Thank you. Okay, we will reconvene open session, so I need a motion to do so.
Hey.
I saw Eric and I guess it was Rob. Was that you? John? Okay, I knew it was a male voice, but I couldn't tell. Okay, all in favor of reconvening open session, we'll just raise hands for this one. Let's make sure it's in the screen. Rob, are you in favor or against?
He is, I'm trying to miscue you on mute, Mr. Cruz. You need to unmute.
I don't know if he can hear us. Rob, can you hear us? Shake your head? Nope. Well, the vote was six to abstention if we want to do it. He waved at me, so okay. So we can count that as.
There we go.
There he is. Thank you very much. Okay, were you voting in favor to reconvene? Yes, Rob? Can you hear me, Rob?
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we were voting to reconvene executive session. What was your vote?
Right, I said yes.
Okay. All right, um, we're going to move to recognitions. And I'm going to read just the paragraph and we'll let you read through on the computer all of the names. The junior high wanted to take a minute to recognize the junior high student athletes who just completed their fall season. During these difficult times, our student athletes did a wonderful job representing our school, both on the athletic field and in the classroom. They provided a bright spot of encouragement, hope, and normalcy during this pandemic. They also worked harder than ever to keep their grades at a high level. A list of some of their accomplishments are posted on the display outside the gym, including their teen GPAs. Thank you to all our fall student athletes and their parents from football, cross-country cheer, junior hockets, and volleyball. So we congratulate all of those students that participated. Thank you, Mr. Allison, for that. Okay, before we get going, I know there are several visitors, people who are attending the Zoom this evening. We're going to give you about thirty seconds here to identify yourself along the bottom if you want to present as if you were a visitor presenting to the board. You will find that chat button at the bottom, so if you would just make it known that you would like to be a visitor to speak before the board, do that now, right? Identify yourself in the chat. I don't see any names in there, do you, Dr. Isaacson?
I do not.
Okay. Just give him a couple more seconds. Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on then, and I'd like to have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda as presented.
I am.
Thank you, Beth. Angie, was that your hand I saw? Okay, so Beth and Angie. Any questions about any of those items listed? Any concerns? Okay, we'll take roll call vote then, Betsy, to approve all items on the consent agenda.
Okay, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
I've lost him.
I did too.
He has signed out and signing back in. He was losing his signal.
Okay.
We'll have to move on and.
Okay.
Okay.
Note that in the minutes at seven oh nine, then when he comes back.
Okay. Mr. Schusler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Welker?
Yes. So motion carries at six zero. Um, moving on to the superintendent report, Dr. Isaacson, I believe you have several things to share with us this evening before we start new business.
Yes, first off, the board had asked about some of the academic impacts of COVID. Previously, when we had talked about the four-day week versus the hybrid and the high number of Fs that we had and some of the academic items. Ms. Hildebrand has spent a significant amount of time putting together some data, reviewing some of that, so I'm going to turn the floor over to her to discuss what she has put together.
So all of the information that I'll be talking about are on those really long pieces of paper that you were giving, either dropped off or this evening. That first sheet that's labeled summative comparison at the top left, that is, I took all the first quarter summatives from three consecutive years. So that's an average. If you'll look at the top under the elementary, eighty-seven point six nine, that was an average average percent for third graders in language arts in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, first quarter summatives altogether. So I took three years of that, and if you'll notice, all the way on the right-hand side, I took a difference. I'm trying to see what kind of learning loss has occurred with being out of school from last March until now. So if you'll notice, I am going to go to the elementary. If you'll look at that building, I'll explain why the primaries are a little scattered up there in just a moment. So if you'll look over at Language Arts III, the difference between the summatives of nineteen twenty and eighteen nineteen was one point one four percent average. And then of twenty twenty-one and nineteen twenty was point nine two. So anything that is black had an increased average, anything that is red had a decreased average. When looking at this information, I think it is very important to note that the same amount of summatives were not given this year as in years previous, depending on the class. As you can imagine, coming into second grade, having not been in school since March of last year, we had to do some significant amount of reteaching and that kind of stuff, so we didn't get as far starting at the beginning from school as where we would have last year and the year previous. So I do anticipate that column all the way on your right-hand side to increase as we move, and I can do this again for the second quarter and again for the semester. I do anticipate those numbers being bumped up. There are some blanks on the top left in the primary because several years ago, we changed the, we tweaked the grade book just a bit. So it used to just say Language Arts, or it had just Skills, so that's why that, those numbers weren't making any kind of sense, so I did leave those out. If you move all the way down to the high school, I did not report every single class. I do have that information if you're interested in every single class. But there were quite a few of them, so I did pull math, I pulled most of the core classes. If you look all the way down at the bottom of that same page, I reported the number of Fs from October fifteenth, that was the information that was given to you at that board meeting, to November second, which was the end of our first quarter. It's important to know that those are the number of Fs, not the number of students with Fs. We could have a student with four Fs, we could have a student with one, so that is the number of Fs total in those buildings, and as you can see, those numbers have decreased in all of our buildings. If you turn the page, every building is broken out the same way, so I will run through the primary information. This is from this year and previous. If you'll notice on the top left of the primary comparison, it says year comparisons grades K and one. I lumped kindergarten and first grade together because they grade the same. They all, they go off of one, two, three, four, instead of an A, B, C, D, F. So I put kindergarten and first grade together. So if you'll notice, it says year comparison grades K and one. Underneath that, four point O, so we put everything back into an A, B, C format. A four point O would be straight A's. So in twenty twenty-one, sixty percent of our kindergarten and first grade students in the first quarter had straight A's. If you look at the next column, in nineteen twenty, fifty-nine percent of our kindergarten and first grade students in the first quarter had an A average. Does that make sense? If you'll look below that, I separated second grade out of there. If you'll go back up to the top to the right, I then took hybrid and virtual students. Again, I put kindergarten and first grade together because they're graded the same here. Sixty-one percent of our hybrid students in the first semester had an A average. Fifty-nine percent of our hundred percent virtual kids had an A average, so you can see that they're very comparable. The column all the way over to the right is the distant learning. So when a student is quarantined from a school contact or a school activity, we take them out of either hybrid or virtual, and we put them in a distant learning category, so you'll see that throughout all of, through all of this information. I did the same thing below that for second grade. And then in your third column, I broke it out individually. So in twenty twenty-one, sixty-nine percent of our kindergartners had an A average, and in nineteen twenty, it was sixty-four percent, and you can see that broken out by K one and two. And then at the very bottom, those are my deductions based off of that information. So grade two virtual outperformed grade two hybrid with an average of three point two and a difference of point two three. So basically, I summed all of that information from the top and put it in the bottom. You following me? Making sense? And I did that for each individual building. So if you move along in your packet, you can take a look at the elementaries on your next page. Followed by the intermediate, the junior high, and the high school. Very interesting. I believe with the exception of one building or one grade level. Well, I guess I didn't break it out like that. So overall, when you're finished looking at this, hybrid and virtual students are performing comparably, speaking. And it is comparable to last year's achievement as well.
That's good. To know, that's a lot of information. Any questions on that before we go back to John?
No, I just want to thank Melissa for all this information.
Yes, well, we need to also thank Kathy Ringo, who pulled this information in, Mr. Allison, who did his junior high comparison and gave the idea to do it for the rest of the buildings. But it is very good information, very valuable.
Thank you, Ms. Hildebrand. A few things in the superintendent report, I did put some information. If you've been paying attention to the news, Governor Parsons issued changes in the state's K twelve quarantine guidance from the governor's office as well as DESI. That guidance stated that if a district had a mask mandate, that students who were in contact with another student who was positive in the school setting, and they were both wearing a mask, would not have to quarantine. And then they passed that to the county health department to make that decision for the respective counties. And then if the county had approved that, then it passes it on down to the local school districts. Jefferson County Health Department reviewed, spent a lot of time reviewing that, and they are not implementing that recommended, those school changes from the state offices at this time because they weren't in alignment with the CDC. Along those lines, the Hillsborough District, we contacted our attorney as well as like the insurance. Is we have to follow our health department along those lines where there is some risk on that as far as if we said, hey, we're not going to let you know those names if they both had masks were in alignment with the Jefferson County Health Department on that. Furthermore, I received an email just this afternoon at two thirty that Governor Parsons issued a public health warning advisory to the state during his briefing this morning. The advisory urges Missourians to do their individual part in helping slow the spread of the virus. They issued some recommendations, but they wrote in the release to us, and this is from DESI, as the press release clearly states, given the minimal transmission of COVID taking place in schools, especially those that have implemented mask mandates, the social gathering recommendations outlining the health warning are not intended to limit in-person learning. However, the ultimate decision will continue to be made by the school districts and local public health officials as these new state guidelines are considered. From a Hillsborough specific, some information regarding how we are doing. The last week has been tough, really, since we last met on November tenth, which had been kind of the beginning of high numbers, and I'm looking at my other computer screen here as I read these. But just to kind of give some key dates, on October fifteenth, when we made the recommendation and discussed going to the four-day, at that time, we had zero staff quarantine. We had one staff out positive, we had fourteen students quarantined, one student was positive. And through October fifteenth, we had had ninety students since the beginning of the school year, students and staff who had been quarantined, and twenty-seven positive cases associated with the district. Not necessarily they got out of school or anything, but just associated with the district. Fast forward to October thirtieth, which would be Halloween-ish, is we're at about a hundred and fifteen cumulative quarantines. And then it just kind of grew from there. November tenth, when we met to dial back and remain in the hybrid, at that day, we had seventeen staff who were quarantined due to contact tracing, eight staff positive, eighty-four students quarantined, eleven students positive that day. And we were up to two sixteen as far as cumulative quarantines. Tuesday of this week was probably our worst weekday as far as contact trace quarantine adults. We had twenty-six teachers out and seven teachers positive. A hundred and twenty-two students quarantined, fifteen students were positive. Today, our numbers are nineteen staff quarantine, twelve being positive. A hundred and thirty-one kids are currently quarantined due to contact, seventeen are positive, our cumulative quarantine is three hundred and twenty-three. Now, a few things that I think they're of importance to note when we talk about the impact of the quarantine and such is, as I was going through here, is we keep kind of track of the number of kids who are quarantined, and I can kind of go through this, and I'll can give you some of the numbers as far as our quarantines. Like at the primary, we've had forty-four students be contact traced out at the primary level since the beginning of the year. As far as being, having them not be in school due to a contact at school, it's minimal. I'm kind of going through here. I think there was two, as I'm looking at the primary, and it was a lunch issue. As far as students that end up being positive, district-wide, as I went through here, we've had one student out of all of our students who've been quarantined, and this was a high school student that ended up being positive, that could be potentially linked to school, and it looks like it was a friend as well as a classmate, as well as maybe a teammate. The rest of any of our students who have been quarantined and ended up being positive either had contact with a positive individual outside of school, lived with them, you know, it was a parent that lived in the home, a brother, a mom. Subsequently, ended up being positive. So we're just not seeing where students who are getting contact traced out end up being positive. Just at the high school, we've had scrolling down through here, we're up to have had a contact tracing where they've been out. And ultimately, an individual, one, two, three, four. But again, only one would be contributed potentially to a school. And the same on the staff. When I talk about the staff COVID and quarantines, a lot of our quarantines are outside of school. So that kind of, most of them are, I mean, there's outside of school is really hurting us as far as a district. And that's outside of our control. It tells me that in school, our mitigation of the kids wearing the mask when they can't social distance and being in a hybrid and being able to space out has saved those in-school number of contacts because it's extremely disruptive. But what is really hurting us as a district is our staff being out. Is on any given day, and I don't know the exact number, but I think it was, we've been running anywhere from ten to fourteen. That be accurate, Ms. Hildebrand? On a given day where we do not have enough subs to sub outside subs coming in, so we're having to pull other staff members to cover that. It's putting a lot of strain on our staff, but it's also puts strain on those positions. We're hired for a reason. If Mr. Allison is having to substitute, he was hired as the assistant principal, so it's been making it challenging for us. I'm hopeful that those numbers will go down, but with the Thanksgiving Day coming up, that remains to be seen. So that's kind of where we are at from a COVID situation. We are at our highest point this week of any week during the school year, and so, but that's probably also consistent with what we're seeing, both in the county and other school districts. So I will talk more about some of our, that's why we had some of our calendar recommendations that we'll talk about as we go through later on in the meeting. Are there any specific questions or clarifications that you would have on some of those or a specific piece of information that you would like? All right, and I will, that's all I'll have is the superintendent report right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Some of us are still having issues logging in, Dr. Isaacson. The meeting apparently is saying that it's full. As the number of participants. So if we can, I don't know if we can expand the meeting. We have visitors and one of our board members that can't get back in.
Okay, I just let instructor Cruz, can we give him an opportunity to? We hit one hundred capacity. There he is.
I don't want to move on till we were able to get, there he is.
There he is.
He's connecting. Hi, Rob, welcome back. Okay. And one of the questions I thought I would ask you is so that the public can know, the probability of us going to virtual, what would you say? How would you address that?
The probability of virtual is going to be probably strictly tied to staffing, you know? If we have the staff to maintain our buses, which is worrisome right now, we don't have a whole lot of room there. Our transportation staff is doing an amazing job, but we just have a limited number of people that can do that and have a license to do that. That would be a factor. If our, we're kind of trending that line on our staff quarantine and staff positive at thirty-three, there's going to come a point to, if we can't cover those classes that we may have a short-term shutdown. I do not envision a long-term virtual if we had to do that. You know, I don't envision a declaration to say we're going virtual through January fifteenth because this ebb and flows, last week, our primary was hit very hard with quarantines. And literally on Thursday, or it's today, we were, you know, we got a lot of those staff members back. And so there's going to be some of that ebb and flow. I would envision any, if we do quarantine, it's going to be strictly tied to staff not having the staffing in place. Our student quarantines, it's not being spread in the schools from student to staff, staff to student. That's been proven with, not just in our district, but in multiple districts. It's the outside of school where our staff are having to quarantine because of spouses, et cetera, so. To answer that question, I see there's not a set threshold other than if there's not enough staffing, and we're going to try to predict that, if I see on a Thursday or Friday, like we're not going to have enough teachers, or we're not going to have bus drivers to run the routes, that's what will cause us to do that, and we may do it, and we probably would do it in short increments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dr. Isaacson before we?
Are you still looking ahead to second semester with us having all students back four days a week?
We will, we put on there that we'll look at that around Christmas, and I don't, on November nineteenth, I truthfully cannot answer that. I mean, on October fifteenth, we looked great. Today, we don't at all, so I think that's going to take some time to kind of see how, how do we get through this, which is, we're rising. We can't withstand much more as from the staffing standpoint. It's important to see how we kind of go through this, and that will assist in making the determination for second semester. Another part of that is also from a staff, when individuals end up being positive, then there's less, that reduces the likelihood of them going out and being on quarantine again. So there's also going to have that impact on the number of staff available, you know, that if they've gotten it, so a direct answer is I don't have a clue what January fifteenth looks like today. I hope to, we want to be back four days. I mean, that's, and ultimately, five days. I, the best I would say in January would be a four-day. I think that's the best. But we have to see what we're able to do as far as staffing. One of the things on a four-day right now, if we are in this, if we were in four days right now and we had started that, we would have shut down the primary this week. The hybrid at least gives us the opportunity to have teachers go into different rooms, which is less than ideal. You know, we had in one class this weekend, a primary, we had two kids in one class and four in another. So we're able to put six kids at tables and make it work. But if those, if that's all the students here, there's no way that we would be able to join those that, those groups up. So those are all the different factors that are going to go and playing into the, bringing us back second semester.
Okay, we'll move on. There is no unfinished business at this time. First item on the agenda is the notice of filing dates for the twenty-one school board election. It begins December fifteenth through January nineteenth. And Dr. Isaacson, I believe you have a statement to read.
I do. Alright, notices hereby given to the general public that the opening filing date for the school board elections. Will be Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, beginning at eight o'clock AM. Interested parties may file at the superintendent's office during regular business hours. Individuals will be chosen to serve as members of the Board of Education for a term of three years. Individual school districts may have adjusted business hours during the holiday season and for COVID nineteen purposes. The closing date for filing shall be Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at five o'clock PM. To qualify for the position of board director, a candidate must be a citizen of the United States, a resident taxpayer of the district. Who has resided in it, in this state for one year preceding his or her election or appointment. And who is at least twenty-four years of age. Publication announcement of this notice fulfills the requirements of Missouri Revised Statute, Section one-one-five. Point one-two-seven subsection five. Um, done at the regular monthly board meeting during the November two thousand and twenty by order of the boards of election. The um, office where people will come for the Hillsborough School District to sign up to be a, uh, for the board election. Will be at five Ridgewood Drive here in Hillsborough along Old Highway twenty-one. Uh, and they will be in contact with our board secretary, Ms. Betsy Noack.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is to approve the board minutes from the special meeting on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. Um, I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Angie.
Second.
Any discussions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, we'll take a vote. Betsy?
We're going to do roll, roll call.
Yes, because it's hard to.
Okay, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schuschler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky? Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Welker?
Yes. Motion carries. Um, the next item is to approve the board minutes from the special meeting on November eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Angie.
Second.
Beth? Any corrections or discussion for those minutes? Alright, we'll take a vote then, roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Abstain, I was, I was absent.
Mr. Schuschler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Welker?
Yes. Thank you very much. The next item is a motion, we need a motion to approve the revisions to the two thousand and twenty-one school calendar as presented.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Angie and Renee. Okay, discussion and questions for Dr. Isaacson or Ms. Hildebrandt regarding those changes. John, is there anything you feel like you need to add to that?
Yes, I mean, um. We needed to make some recommendations in preparation potentially for second semester. Um, and adding some student attendance days. Um, potentially if we were in the hybrid because we're doing the virtual Wednesdays. And so kind of the, kind of the highlights to this is. Uh, we would, well, this'll, look at our current situation, our recommendation, since we're making the changes anyhow. Is to turn next Monday and Tuesday, November twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, to reclassify those as news, no school. We have high numbers right now, our staffing um, is very challenging. Is to allow for uh, our students to apparently quarantine and our staff to kind of clear that out. Um, and to give our parents and our teachers a little breather. Uh, and our, our staff as far as uh, having to cover. So rather than, I know some alter, other schools are moving to virtual Monday and Tuesday of next week. Is we're proposing that we just, it's no school. Um, and we will add that day, we're tentatively scheduled to go a half day on December eighteenth. The reality is that doesn't make sense because now we're probably, we're going to be in the hybrid. And on Thursday, our blue students would have went a full day, but our uh, white team students would have went a half a day. So adjusting that to make that a full day of school and then adding um, a day to the end of the school year. And that will be May twenty-eighth, that's the Friday before Memorial Day. We were tentatively scheduled to get out on the twenty-seventh, that Thursday. By making these changes, um, and making February eighth a student attendant day, March nineteenth a student attendance day. And May third, to balance the calendar, the first five snow days that we have as a district do not have to be made up. They will not be made up. So if I have to call a snow day, um, we will not have to add any additional days to the calendar. But the key item for parents, if they're paying attention and I will post tonight, if approved, is there will be no school. On Monday and Tuesday, but that's not going virtual, that's, we're going to have an extended, we'll call it fall break or Thanksgiving break. It'll be similar to almost like a Christmas break next week.
And in reality, our students themselves are only missing one day.
They're only missing one day and our thought process was they're missing one day. Um, and to make it uh, a no school day versus a virtual day. And so that um, our parents aren't having to, you know, daycare is already challenging. But then they're also not going to have to worry about if, hey, will you assist with my child's Zoom meeting that day and all that is just. Um, go no school, we'll add that half a day on December eighteenth and at the end of the school year. And hopefully it was some, um, even more productive day uh, at that time, so. That's the thought process.
You know, I just have to say and share that. I'm glad that we're not offering a virtual option for that one day next week. My kids need a day, they need a day to be kids. And I know they're going to really look forward to just sleeping in and going outside and being kids. So I, I hope others see that as an opportunity to take a break. So. Um, okay, what about staff? I know teachers are off, but what about like the twelve-month staff? Um, can they have a break as well? Because they, not classroom, but you know.
Just well. That would have to be a board decision because on a no school day.
Um. They normally work.
They, you know, is, I will be working Monday and Tuesday unless we're able to take vacation time. The teachers ultimately, and this, that's important to know is, it's not necessarily a day off. It is on a teacher contract, it's a changing of the day. Right, is, so it's not a shortening of the contract is essentially if I'm. Uh, on a ten-month contract as a teacher, a hundred-and-eighty-day contract. I wasn't going to work May twenty-eighth, but now I am.
Right.
So Monday's moving to May twenty-eighth is just um, Monday and Tuesday are day off. But May twenty-eighth is now a workday. And so that's. Kind of how that works. And I know that impacts some of our classified staff as well, twelve-month classified is. And certified without changing or offering an additional like holiday, a paid holiday, that would, that's. What would have to occur.
Okay, any other uh, questions or concerns?
What about our hourly staff? What are their options?
Okay, our twelve-month uh, hourly staff are, will be just like the Christmas break. If they want to take off, it's a regular workday for them. Our ten and eleven-month staff. Um, they will be making up that day, like if I'm a paraprofessional. Is I ultimately will work that day, that school day, but it's in May. Um, and that's why we added item J is um, later on. If this is approved, to offer the option for um. Anyone, our classified staff that are ten and eleven month. It's already going to be a short uh, paycheck with the Thanksgiving holiday. Is offering the option if they would like to use one of their leave days next week to submit a leave day on Monday and Tuesday. For, and they would be paid for that, but it would come off this year's leave. Our staff, we have an intend, attendance incentive. And basically at the end of the year, they are, any unused days that were given this year, they will receive a hundred bucks in July. Basically, item J, if this is approved, is allowing that individual to get some of that money. Like if they put in for those two days now, they'll get, you know, whatever their hourly daily rate is. And it typically is going to be around a hundred bucks or more, get paid for there. But then they would have two days taken off their July, or they can choose not to uh, use any leave time. And they're going to be ultimately be paid for this day when they work on May twenty-eighth, it's just down the road. And so that's kind of how that is working out. So, but we want the opportunity because there's still bills to be paid in December uh, to have that opportunity to get some of that money. So that's how it'll impact ten and eleven.
Was that? John, is this a closed campus on Monday and Tuesday or there's still activities in the afternoon or?
No, it's just like a Christmas break. We're not closing the campus, we're just, there's no school, so it'll be like Christmas, there'll still be.
Still basketball practice or?
Yes, there'll just, there'll still be practices, I think there's actually games, staff will be working, it'll just be almost like a Christmas break.
Good.
Okay, anybody else? The motion is to approve um, the revisions to the two thousand and twenty, you're as presented. Betsy, roll call please.
Hey, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schuschler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Welker?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. The next item has to do with the early separation program. So um, I need a motion to approve the early separation incentive program as presented.
Motion move.
Okay, I heard Rob, no I didn't, I heard John and I saw Eric.
No.
Correct?
No, I didn't.
Must have been Beth.
You saw Rob.
Okay, so Schuschler, Petrie. Something's really delayed here. Okay, any discussion on that item? Okay, things rearranged, so I lost some people. Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote on approving the ESIP.
Okay, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schuschler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Welker?
Yes. Thank you for that. Um, the next item is a, um, looking to approve three bus driver positions. So I need a motion to approve the hiring of three bus drivers.
Motion.
Was that John?
Robert.
And Eric, I saw Eric wave, okay. So John and Eric. This is something we've been looking at for a while. Any questions about this item? Okay, Betsy, roll call then.
Okay, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schuschler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Welker?
Yes, thank you again. Um, item G. Has to do with background checks with the fee for substitutes. So I need a motion to approve the payment of background check fees for substitutes for the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-one school year.
I move.
Thank you, Renee?
One second.
And Eric. John, is there anything you, you care to share with that?
Um, just that, one of the things why we're recommending this is there's a forty-two-dollar fee approximately for getting a background check. And substitutes are at a premium right now in the area. And we want substitutes to get a background check through the district because there's a program called Rat Back that literally. If somebody would get arrested, we get, uh, I get, I get an email notifying of them, me of that. Which is important for the safety of our kids. Um. But individuals that are subbing, if they signed up to Sub at Festus last week and they got a background check. It's kind of a deterrent to go uh, and get another background check and another background check. Is for us to pay for that, it'll be a nominal cost probably year long. I mean, if we get fifty subs, it's two thousand dollars and that's going to be money well spent to have a proper, uh, appropriate staffing.
Any other questions? Alright, so the motion, sorry. What? So the motion is to approve these background check fees for substitutes. Betsy?
Okay, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
It's kind of in slow motion.
Yes.
Mr. Schuschler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Welker?
Yes. Thank you. Um, the next two items are discussions that we would like to have. The first one. Um, will regard a leave policy which will cover new procedures after January first. Um, since the, one of the federal acts will be expiring. Dr. Isaacson, is there anything you'd like to kind of prep them with first?
Yeah, is um, all the federal COVID uh, relief from the family's first uh, coronavirus response act expire on December thirty-first? What that has done is, you know, as most employees, if they uh. Had COVID or there was the contact tracing, uh, there was that ten days that were not taken from their leave. Um, for their private leave. With that expiring, uh, we know that. There is the potential to have uh, some exposure at school. Today, we haven't had significant, but we want to be able to provide our teachers with uh, the support. If they need it, if there is a contact here at school, um, so that they're able to uh, kind of have that protection. So proposing, this would be a policy. Uh, typically we'd have three reads and there isn't sufficient time to get that done prior to January one. Is after the discussion today, if we're good with that, I need to probably. Uh, retweet some things and clarify some language, but the general outline would be this, that. Um, read that basically, to support absences for employees who have consistently followed all district safety protocols. And procedures and who are required to quarantine as a result of a potential exposure at work. Or closure of the district work location. Or who are unable to work in person or remotely shall be eligible for up to ten days as district provided quarantine leave. At their regular rate of pay. Furthermore, and if employees are, who's school age Hillsborough students. Are required to quarantine due to a potential exposure. are required to quarantine due to a potential exposure while in attendance at school here in Hillsborough and they can't work onsite or remotely, they would be eligible for a ten-day quarantine leave uh paid at the regular rate. Uh, another big piece of this is we're recommending, and we haven't as yet done this, is if staff are able to teach or work remotely, then they wouldn't even access these quarantine leave days. Uh, the following procedures would be implemented where teachers, if they're on quarantine and they are able to, we'll work with them via giving them the access, but they would, if they're able to teach remotely. And by teach remotely, I mean, if I'm at home today, I would log into my classroom during that hour. I may jump in for thirty minutes, seven times a day I'm teaching. And that's working remotely from home. We are still going to have to get a substitutes purely for the supervision piece of it. But to try to improve our instruction, like in a situation where we have nineteen staff members quarantined, they would work from home. If they do not or are unable to work from home and it is a uh district-related quarantine, they would be eligible. If there's not a district-related, if I have to stay home because my spouse is positive, uh then I need to be teaching remotely or I'm going to have to use my own leave time. So it's not as free as the federal guidelines, but it protects as far as the district if you would get in contact while at work. And most of our contacts, quite frankly, of our staff, it's not work-related. It's they're getting uh their contacts are outside of school and their personal lives are at home. Uh, but we're offering the ability to work remotely if they can. And in regards to other employees, um, some jobs are not going to be able to work remotely. Um, but putting in a process for which maybe depending on the position, an individual would be able to do a job and work remotely. Uh, Ms. Hildebrand, for example, you know, if she had to be out, she could do her job remotely, but we would set up a working plan, a check-in so that we can monitor that because it would be different than it was in the spring for our employees. Uh, where we're just were like kind of working from home, watching safety videos. This has to be tangible items that could be done uh from home. So just putting something in place, allowing teachers to teach from home if they're quarantined and healthy. If they're not healthy, then you need to use their sick time. But this is going to provide better instruction for our students. For sure, you know, for some of our teachers are on quarantine, which they would love to be able to zoom in and be able to instruct uh rather than rely on substitutes to provide that instruction. So if you're, if the board would is in agreement to kind of let me move forward with that and refine it, I need to get some legal things checked out, uh but move forward on that. Questions?
Well, and just to clarify, Dr. I, this is for them to pro- provide virtual instruction, not to be uploading worksheets and in they're actually going to be interacting with students and being engaged.
That would be um our requirement there. To the standpoint of there is, um, and I think I had written in there, there's a line, "Teachers will be assessed and monitoring virtual instruction assignments just as occurs with in-person instruction." So it needs to be of the standard of which if you are one of our teachers and you're teaching at the intermediate, then Mr. Rena or myself jump in and we're going to do your teacher evaluation. You know, it's got to be that type of a a quality to that. It's just not, hey, I gave some homework, call it a virtual day. No, it's going to be, if I'm working remotely, I am jumping in. I I can't, you know, physically uh move around the classroom, but I can, you are all my students and we are engaging as if I was there. That would be the application.
Okay, if the government does uh another version of the COVID relief plan, uh would we follow that or would this go into play or um how would they? And there's an if there obviously.
Well, and here's the thing, what we could probably put to protect the district on so that there's not twenty days.
A duel, right.
Duel is that any um of the quarantine leave would be congruent with each other as far as that to be the ten days either or type of a scenario. Um, and put language in there that if there was still uh an extension. But if again, if a teacher is working remotely, they're not even using that quarantined leave time from the government or um us, you know, that's, I guess, uh, when I was positive, my wife was quarantined is, you know, she virtually taught her students at the school that she works in doing that, she would not, was actively engaged in grading them on presentations. So none of the leave would even count against them. They're just working remotely. So we would keep that in place regardless, starting January one.
And then I guess the other thing is that as I read through it just the first time, um, the other thing, we have so many staff members that are out of district and I know this is definitely uh if their kids go to Hillsborough only, it provides them to take advantage. So if it's a teacher out of district and their kids are going to another district, then they would not be eligible if under the quarantine that is caused by one of their own students' kids being at home, correct?
Correct. And the route, the rationale for that and visiting is the district could be in a situation where um teacher, I mean, with different, if you're in the St. Louis, say you're in the two seventy area and we have a teacher that's school, their child goes to school in a district that goes virtual the remainder of the year or that closes the remainder of the year subsequently, uh, they could potentially, because we have a written per ten days per occurrence, if they're not able to teach remotely, you could have a teacher be like, or any staff member, my child is there, they're quarantined. And without the documentation and it could get out of, out of hand, quite frankly, because other dis, you know, my child, they're going virtual the rest of the year. I can't come back. But we've just provided quarantine leave for the remainder of the year.
Right.
Is here, Nurse Woodham is able to verify the quarantine and there's some quality control there.
Well, and it did say per occurrence, and I guess the other thing that flipped into my head was your um secondary staff and um specials at the elementary level definitely has more exposure to number of students than a normal or an average elementary teacher. So, you know, they're probably at a higher risk for more respecters here.
But to, when you look at the the quarantine leave piece of it, per cor- currents, the key piece here is if I'm a music teacher at the primary, if I'm able to teach remotely, I may be quarantined and it doesn't even count.
Right.
Able to work, it's not, it's a non-factor. Potentially, the individuals that would be most impacted by this is and it, like me, I I was positive with COVID, so I was sick that time. I probably shouldn't get COVID over and over and over again.
Correct.
Is this, if I have the flu, that doesn't count. I'm sick, is I need to use my sick time, is this is for multiple quarantines and I'm not able to teach remotely or work remotely. The individuals who this probably most helps the most regarding the quarantine leave would be our classified staff, a bus driver. If they have a student on their bus and they end up being quarantined. And then three weeks that, you know, you can't drive a bus remote is it gives them that protection if it would occur multiple times. That said, as I stated earlier in the meeting, I believe that we've only had four or five uh less than ten staff members who've been contact traced out due to in-school. So there's not, most of our stuff is outside of school, so that's going to be on there on them for that.
So this, this policy will be tweaked yet. MSBA can look at it. If you have changes that you'd like to see made or questions, be sure and contact Dr. Isaacson about that. And then at the next meeting, we'll present it again for a vote. Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to the next item, which um has to do with um some of the new guidelines that are going to impact the district. Um, it was a discussion from the last meeting um about maybe putting together a letter of some sort um from the board. So uh, I think, Mr. Schussler, you were the one that requested this if I correctly. So what is, what are your thoughts? What are you wanting the board to maybe look into?
Well, after, I was discussing it with Dr. Isaacson as well. He could probably elaborate some, but um the thing is, uh, actually, it was the very next day after the meeting that Governor Parsons issued what seemed like uh uh saving grace there, but the local health department has chosen not to follow that. But if we had him, if we, if we had that in place, the educational um benefit would be huge, I think, for this district. Because as Dr. Isaacson has pointed out earlier in the meeting, the quarantines that are taking place from contact tracing from school are not producing positive cases. There, the, the school is actually one of the healthier places to be. And yet we're laboring under these bureaucratic guidelines that are hamstringing our ability to have teachers teach. So I uh, I, I, I'm, I'm wanting to not us, have us play the victim right now and actually present our case rather than waiting for someone to make our circumstances better, to be a little more proactive about that. That's my reason for wanting to submit a letter of some kind. Originally, it was supposed to be um to the state because they were the ones um putting us under this onus. But uh, I, I think we have to maybe modify that to go to the local health department since they're the ones right now that are holding this up. Um, although DHSS, after talking with Dr. Isaacson, is not helping in regarding that they're leaving it in the hands of the local health department. They're not making a clear directive one way or the other. So um, I think i- if, if you want to, John, uh, maybe give an indication of what you want or what, what we could say.
Well, I think, uh, I think the, the health department and the legislators and as well as the CDC, I think it's important for them to see the impact at school. Um, most of our transmission and our contact tracing is outside of school. Uh, that's the, the biggest risk is outside of there. So I think a letter would include, you know, the Hillsborough specific data. Because all the other data, um, I, I'm not, I don't know that we can put our name behind, but I can explicitly say that, you know, on any given day, we have uh nineteen staff members who are out on quarantine um and unable to teach. And there's a definite impact on our students from a learning standpoint. And we find that ultimately, many of them don't end up being positive, especially on the student's side. Uh, and just list out our facts as far as how it is impacting the Hillsborough district, how we've remained in hybrid and the, the uh and putting some of our grades and academic achievement in there to just, you know, if we're to put the kind of the nuts and bolts is to, this is what um the impact of quarantine and the impact of these other mitigations, and this is how it is impacting the Hillsborough school and impacting our kids.
And yeah, to just sum up, basically, use the data to say, look, this is the educational impact from your guideline, the contract tracing. And this is the actual health impact that, you know, you're have, we're having by doing what you say. And the fact that it just doesn't match up, that would be the substance of the letter on.
Well, and you also said in the context of we're in hybrid, that the numbers would pro- very likely be diff- much different if we weren't in hybrid. So that needs to be part of it as well. The context of those, that data.
That is a, I mean, when we, when I first got this information from the governor, I went through and looked at how many of our individuals that would have protected us from a quarantine. And approximately be like three to four staff members, because it has to be school-related contact. And um, maybe two or three students due to a classroom, because our student contacts have taken place in the lunchroom and kids are eating, so they're not going to be wearing the mask or in athletics. So, but in a four-day week, it's extremely, or a five-day week, it's extremely powerful. If students are wearing a mask and they're sitting in class, then they won't be quarantined. That would be, that, that would be almost we would have to have that in place in order to go back four or five days. That would.
Well, and in a five-day plan, students would not really be able to social distance either. Would have to be worn.
So, but if they were not able to, if we were going five days a week and they were not able to social distance, but they had a mask and both did, then what's coming out from guessing the governor is that they would not have to quarantine.
Okay, it'd be interesting to compare our data with a district that, like DeSoto, that has been going five days and then switched to four days. Just for um, you know, those same perspective.
Ultimately, that would, my thought too is, is that we need to, it creates more powerful message if we can speak as even a, a county or at least a group of districts rather than just even one. Um, I just want to get the ball rolling on this, so.
I, I, John, I, I like the idea, like you said, of including the health department with that because, you know, they're i- if we include the CDC, the health department and, you know, Department of Health and Senior Services, that's while they did send out this, this edict, if you will, it really has no teeth because they're leaving it up to local control, which, okay, that's great, but, you know, I, I wonder if we couldn't get um the MSBA lobbyists kind of work with us too on that. That might be another angle to go also in addition to whatever.
So contact MSBA. So I tried to jot down the notes of all the things that we said, so that might help with the letter writing. Um. What about, will you be trying to address some of this with other superintendents?
I can visit with them and kind of have a discussion of what we're talking about here and gather, you know, uh, comparison of data, which we do all the time.
Yes.
To just uh compare some of that and um, you know, for those schools that are going five days a week, uh, I could see it being potentially very powerful. You know, I don't want to speak for that. Their boards of education are kind of on that, but I, I don't mind reaching out to just uh seeing if there would be interest there, but also getting the information on potential quarantines is how much, if that had been in place, would it have saved in your district? Because that's a quantifiable number potentially and.
Well, so many of those districts have gone virtual now.
Correct.
Where we're able to still be in school. Eric, I interrupted you, I think. Were you going to say something? Okay. Okay, so is that enough information for now that we could try to put something together?
So just so I'm clear on a clear directive is um to, is the board, would they like me to have a, like, is it a directive to move forward? Um, putting together a letter and gathering information regarding that as far as specifically Hillsborough, reaching out to other districts to see if they would. Hillsborough, reaching out to other districts to see if they would potentially want to be a part of a joint letter or sharing of information as to what is going on within our buildings and how this is all impacting us with quarantining and such. To kind of put all of our factual information potentially together, or at the very least, from the Hillsborough district, and then present that in letter form for the district, for the board to review at our next meeting and then send, if they so choose to, I guess then at that point you would vote on sending whatever is put there. And I would probably put that out prior, if the board is okay with, I may do in different things in email, I'll, I'll check regarding that, or maybe just some draft of what I'm thinking or putting out on the facts, maybe as well, I'm kind of working through this in the coming weeks. You cannot, we can't have a meeting or anything like that to talk about, and I'll just be penning my thoughts and to offer input individually and collectively, or if there's a point that an individual would like to make, send that to me and I could incorporate that.
Okay. Any other thoughts that members would like to add? To share with John? Okay. Then we'll move to item J, and this one was added in case the calendar changes were approved, and they were. So I'd like to have a motion to allow the 10 and 11-month classified employees to be able to use a leave day on November 23rd and 24th. I move. Thank you, Renee. I don't know who said, who the second was.
Second.
Thank you, John. Item was already kind of discussed before when we were talking about the calendar changes. Are there any other thoughts or questions regarding this topic? Okay, then, we'll take a vote to allow those 10 and 11-month employees to use their leave days. Betsy?
Okay, Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Schussler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes. So motion carries. All right. So that concludes all of the items on the agenda. I need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth and John. All in favor, I should be able to see hands for this one. Raise your hand if you agree. All right, motion carries, 7-0. Motion adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll be sending out an email to the district and the community right now, proposing the calendar changes.